Call.
Sure, Mr. Cornelius.
Present.
Mr. Cooley?
Present.
Commissioner Douglas, absent. Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Sheriff Schell?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, should we do the Pledge of Allegiance, John?
Sure. Put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Order of the agenda, I approve it, so we'll keep going. Blue folder items supplemental, is there anything we need to discuss?
No.
Perfect. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? None, we'll move on. Consent calendar, we've got 7A approved affidavit of posting for the Planning Commission regular meeting on April 16th, 2024. Approved the minutes for the March 19th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. I'll make a motion to approve items 7A and 7B as presented.
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. I don't see an excluded consent calendar item, so we'll move on to public hearings on items continued from previous meetings. This is zoning case number 23-150. This is for Two Possum Ridge Road. John, you want to give us an overview?
Sure. Two Possum Ridge Road is a continued item. It was continued from the previous meeting by the Planning Commission in March, on March 22nd. It is for a site planner view and a condition lease permit and variance, which was originally submitted for the application. The site is located there in the center part of the city of Rolling Hills. And this is a close-up of the site. As you can see, it's traversed by Possum Ridge Road that goes right down the middle. Project is zone RES2. It's 3.5 acres, and there's an existing residence there constructed in 1949, along with eight buildings in total and a generator on the property. Little bit of the background on the site that was given at the last meeting, but there is a main residence, there's work on that residence, some additions that were approved in the 70s. According to records, detached garage is built in 1975, the farm equipment shop was built in 75 as well. There was work done on the stable loft in 1994. There are two detached storage sheds, one built in 1950, the other one in 1970s. There's also an enclosed cabana and that transformer generator. In terms of the summaries of approvals needed, the site planner view is required for development on the property, and you can see the list of items there that you're considering. There has been a change to the project, and the applicant is looking to, for some direction actually from the Planning Commission in terms of the stable corral and sports court, which I'll get to a little bit later, but for right now, the applicant is still looking to get the house addition approved. The project does require a variance, variances to encroach into the front and rear yard setbacks. The northern portion of the existing residence already encroaches into the front yard setback, and so the addition will encroach as well in that area. The swimming pool encroaches into the 50-foot rear yard setback, and the applicant indicates there is a hardship to the configuration of the lot being traversed by Possum Ridge Road, separating in two different portions. In terms of the revisions, the project has been revised. You can see the previous, the, do we have the pointer? No?
Oh, it's right there behind that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So this shows the, what's there now, the existing, and that second column, it shows what was proposed previously. Again, at this point, they're looking to take out the barn and the tennis court, and so the revised project is what, is only for the residence addition and the areas in that area, the swimming pool and other improvements. So what that does is actually cuts the grading down from about 27, 43 cut, 2300 cubic yards to fill, and in total, it's 1900 now of cut and 1875 cubic yards of fill, for a total of about 3800 cubic yards. They'll be exporting 68 cubic yards, that's exempt. In terms of the structural lot coverage, the revision went down to 4,880 square feet of structural coverage, and that's because of the, they took out the additions to the barn and also the tennis court. So the total is actually an 8.3%, you're allowed up to 20% maximum. Flatwork actually increased, and so it was 6,980 square feet before, and this is just including the driveway area. They're increasing that to about 8,640 square feet, 5.7% of the total lot, for a total of 10.3%. In total, for the structural flatwork, it actually goes down overall from 18,000 proposed before to about 13,500 square feet now. The maximum you're allowed is 35%, and they're proposing 18.6%, so they meet that requirement. Structural coverage has gone down because they're no longer proposing the tennis court in that area, and so that's gone down to 47,000 square feet, which is under the 40% maximum. And they're going to look to put the addition on that residential building pad, number one, and hold off on the sports pad for now. So some of the issues of concern at the last meeting included the visibility of the tennis court, the size of the stable, the height of the stable and residence, drainage flow, and construction parking. In terms of visibility of the tennis court, again, that's going to be removed for the time being, the stable size as well. The height of the residence hasn't changed, that's still being proposed. The drainage, applicant indicates there is no impact to the drainage, natural drainage flow is still going to be followed, you won't have drainage going down Possum Ridge Road to the properties down below. It basically either drains to the west or to the east of the property. And in construction parking, the applicant is willing to have parking either on the site, on the property, and off of Possum Ridge Road. Any overflow would be on Crest Road to the south. And so this just gives you a comparison of what was proposed before. This is the previous site plan that you looked at at the March meeting. You can see the barn and addition is still there, the tennis court being proposed on the eastern portion of the lot, and then the rest of the addition. Property lines are shown in the red, the street easements are shown there in the green, Possum Ridge Road going through the property, and you have Crest Road on the bottom side. In terms of setbacks, you have the front along Possum Ridge, the rear on the outside edge, and everything else is really your side yard setbacks. And what the applicant is proposing is to really just get, do away with the tennis court and that barn addition, and so what you're really looking at is the project being this right here, the house addition, the swimming pool, expansion of the driveway. They are also looking to leave the garage. So before, they were looking to actually cut off that portion of the garage in order to meet the 35-foot setback requirement from the stable, and so now they're looking to just keep that garage portion there. A portion of it may still encroach though, but we can add a condition on there requiring that they either shave some off of the garage or demolish the stable at a future time. So again, this is showing you the revised project without the barn and the tennis court. Similarly, this is the grading, and this is what you saw before with the tennis court located on the east side, and some grading work done to the barn. The revisions only have grading on, for the residence, north side of the residence is fill, and then you have some cut in the driveway area to expand the driveway. This shows the elevations of the house, this is what's been proposed, it hasn't changed, they are still proposing the same height, and they feel that it is compatible with the existing development in the area. We had a concern originally about a loft in that area, but they are showing on the plan that there is no staircase leading up to that space. The headroom space is six feet, and they'll be providing a ladder that you can pull open to access that area, so it's really an attic space and not a loft. This is one of the concerns before in the past, and that's dealing with that pool equipment area that was attached to the basement, so they're doing away with that. The new location of the pool equipment would be located in this location, next to the staircase that goes down to the fire pit area, which is just north of the swimming pool. And this is the previous basement area, it's another close-up of that area of where they're proposing that pool equipment area before where it was attached to the basement, and that shows the outline of the existing house. You can kind of see that kind of spills over and is not, goes outside of the footprint of the house above. This is what they're proposing, it's kind of turned around though, but that basement area is right here. It used to be, that pool equipment was proposed to be in that area there, it's no longer proposed there. It'll be located in this area here, next to that staircase that goes down to the fire pit, so it's accessible from the outside. And they are also showing that area leading up to the attic. You can't read it there though, but that call-out basically says that it's, that they'll have a ladder that you can access to the attic above. This is the previous proposal for the driveway area, stable, the additions, and that's showing the project without the additions to the stable. So they're going to keep the existing stable there and the existing garage or maintenance building there and the other structures. Again, so they're going to do away with the addition, connecting those two buildings, and then leave them as is. In terms of the garage space, they are looking to keep that area there that's existing now. Previously, they were proposing to be cut off, to take off that third stall in order to meet 35-foot requirement from the barn, but since that's no longer going to be done, they're kind of keeping the garage, that third stall. That area, in this area where there's a storage shed, they're looking to have that as being the service yard for trash pickup. The driveway is supposed to be widened to 32 feet, the center of that will be a tree planter. Oh, and just going back to this, there was an increase in pavement area, and that's this area right over here in front of the garage storage. They are looking to have that area paved in order to access the maintenance building. This is something the applicant is proposing to do, and if the Planning Commission is in favor of this proposal, the applicant can come back at a later time. And what they're showing is that they're, they're showing that barn, the existing barn being demolished, and they'd like to have the proposed court in that location where the barn is, and then on the other side of the street where the tennis court was proposed at before, they're looking to put a new barn in that location. So it's basically a swap, they want to swap the tennis court and the barn in that location. The bottom there shows a section through the stable, it's showing that they'll, you know, they're proposing to have a loft, and it's generally in the same location as where the proposed tennis court was before. In terms of communication, this was noticed for the March meeting, notices were also sent within 1,000 feet of the subject property to owners, and again, we did receive a concern from the neighbor at the last meeting, however, we haven't received any recent correspondences for this meeting, other than asking if the meeting was still going on. In terms of the sequel review, California Civil Quality Act, we find that it's exempt under Section 15303. It's a class three exemption for new construction of single-family residences, accessory structures, and our recommendation is the Planning Commission to open the public hearing, take public testimony, and then provide direction to staff and the applicant. If the Planning Commission wishes to approve the project for the addition to the house, there is a resolution provided in the staff report for the Planning Commission to consider. We could also add conditions as the Planning Commission wishes, and so that concludes our presentation. We're available for any questions.
Thank you, John. Any questions?
Yes. Sorry. Up front, you said they weren't addressing, they separated the house, which I think is a good idea, and then, but at the end, you commented on the barn and the new barn and the sports court. Is that just, you're trying to separate it and do two things, so to speak? Just have us look at the house on its own and then just make comments to that, but we're not going for approval of what's below?
Correct. Yeah, so right now, you're considering the site planner view and the variance for the house addition. The condition lease permits were for the barn, the corral, and the tennis court, the recreational court, and so that would be considered at a later time. We would have to still look at the setback requirements and, you know, make sure that it all fits.
Good. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to point out that I was absent at the last meeting, and I also wasn't on the field trip that day, but I did drive by and looked at the silhouette of the house, and so I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you.
So John, I got a couple of questions. In one of the slides, you had talked about the garage staying, the third stall or whatever, and the distance between the barn, and you said that there is something else there that may come down, may not come down. I'm not sure I followed you as to what you were addressing.
So in looking at the plans, it still looks like it's still within that 35 feet. The thing is, it'll be existing, so the garage won't be moved, the only thing is, it will be attached to the house now, and because it will be attached to the house, our code says that it's basically part of the house, and that 35-foot requirement comes into play.
But is it, is it 35 feet, less than 35 feet from the existing barn or the new barn?
Less than 35 feet from the existing barn.
Okay, well, it's going to be, we can't approve that then unless they do this and they take that barn down, because we can't approve that piece of it without the barn being gone. So that may be a hiccup in the plan that you guys are proposing. So that's question one.
Real quick, if it's an existing condition though...
It's an LA County code, you can't have a...
But it's not, it's not attached to the house right now. When they get done with this, it will be attached to the house, so it's considered a part of the house.
So they could do it, but they'd have to keep it separate and not have it attached to the house?
That's, that's a different story. Yeah, that's, I believe that is the case, because it's not living space.
Right.
Okay. So that's, that's one, and then two, you said the hardscapes, the hardscape went up, and I'm assuming that what I heard was that it is the area in front, behind the garage, in front of the shed or whatever, that they are, that area right there?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the area that they're, and how much of that are they planning to asphalt or put hard structure on?
This one doesn't quite show it though, but it kind of comes across almost like that.
And where, I'm trying to remember, I can't remember from our tour, where is the door to that?
Door to the garage?
To that, to that room, I mean, if they're, if they're obviously paving in front of it, there's a door on that side that they're trying to get access to. Do you know where that door is?
I'd have to look at the...
Okay, well, we can ask the applicant. Okay, so that's, that's, that's the only questions I have.
So I could probably answer the question that you had in regards to the, the building or garage being too close to the stable. So there's two things, and I believe we added a condition in there. It's either on page 34 or 35 of the proposed resolution. I also had correspondences with the applicant as well, and according to them, they are willing to either, if they need to shave off some portions of that garage to make it comply, or are willing to take a condition that the barn be demolished prior to issuance of a building permit for the residence.
Yeah, I mean, if they're taking that barn down, it would be a shame to take the garage down, that defeats the purpose, so. And I know they're trying to separate it to get it resolved, if they are going to take that barn structure down, then take it down, that resolves the 35 feet, we can move ahead, but the two, anyways. Okay, you've answered my question.
Any other questions or...
Oh, we're good. Okay, so at this point, tell them I'm going to open it up to the public. If you'd like to speak, please come up, state your name, address, so we can get it for the record. John?
I'm Megan Campbell, art director for the project, and can I get this?
Oh, the presentation, sorry.
That's fine. It's not showing. Hmm.
It's showing the long screen.
Oh, okay. All right. I wanted to thank all the commissioners and John, of course, for all of your thoughtful comments from last time and clear direction, and it's really been a pleasure to work with you guys so far in getting this project through. So today, we did pull off the barn and pull off the court, because we really want to make sure that we're proposing something that is as close to approvable as possible. We want to, you know, get the silhouette up long enough for people to take it in, and it is a big chunk of the project, and priority number one right now for them is to hopefully have this approved and built before the baby comes, so no pressure.
We'll try to do our part. Can't help with the baby, but...
So I just put together a few before and after renderings, just so we can kind of see, get a feel for, for the proposal. This is the view from Portuguese Bend and Crest, there's the before and the after, and then here's from Crest, the before and after. So this isn't the exact view, obviously, but you can see that the sightline is really just the blocking of trees and a bit of their backyard, it's not, you know, the, the distance views from the neighboring properties. And to answer your question of the garage, there's another three-car equipment garage that's in the back here, and they're expanding the driveway, all permeable pavers. Right now, it only, the existing driveway only goes to the first stall of it, so they're just widening it to the other two stalls to be able to have access to all three. And we're perfectly fine with the condition of approval that either the stable needs to be demolished or the garage needs to be cut back. So, you know, if we, if we just said we will demolish the stable and then the new stable doesn't get approved, we might want to keep the existing stable and pull back the garage, so I think if we can do it as an either/or, that would be best for us than having to come back and amend it. So the one, I think we addressed most of the concerns, either taking it out of the scope or by, you know, addressing the little issues of the loft or the basement, pool equipment room. The one issue that we didn't change is the height of the structure, and it's, John had mentioned last time that they have a lot of approved projects on this property throughout the, mostly the 70s, a couple in the 90s, and the as-builts of this property are not very true. So there was actually an addition that was proposed in 1974 that got approved, and about half of it was built. So they did a little part of the scope over here, a little part over here, but in that addition, they had proposed to connect the two buildings, which is what we're proposing again 50 years later, to connect the two houses, and they took the existing ridge lines, came up to a central ridge line. And when we had come around to that, we came to that exact number without looking at the previous drawings, because, you know, we took the as-built information from the previous drawings, but then we did our own design, and we actually came out to the same proposal as they had done in the 50, or in 74, and got approved. So it would have been an existing condition if they did the project. So we can, I mean, it's not going to be an easy thing to lower that without demolishing large portions of the roof, and also either having an inconsistent roof slope, which will have to get approved from the architectural committee, or just demolishing the whole roof and bringing it to a flatter roof slope so we then can bring it down. But there's not really an easy path to lower that ridge height, especially in the middle where it's at its highest. And then with the barn and court swap, that was, a lot of the feedback we were getting was put the barn on the other side, make that the equestrian side of the property, the, keep the pasture, keep what that was, and then have the court on the other side a little bit closer to the house and outside of that main view corridor. So we did do a quick swap, just to get initial, you know, gut feedback, and if the commission is open to it, we'll erect the silhouettes, and we'll come back in a month or two with the real proposal for discussion. I think that's it. If there's any questions?
Questions?
I have a question about the cut and fill, but I assume someone else will be coming up for that.
I have a question on the, next to the, yeah, three-car garage, and then you have the equipment garage, which you talked about. So is that currently zoned as a barn, John? I don't know, is that currently just a separate garage next to the two-story barn?
It's separate, yes, it's separate from the barn. The barn is on the east.
Okay, but isn't that equipment garage the issue with 35 feet? That's the structure that's got the issue?
No.
Is it the barn itself, the corner of the barn?
Yeah, I think the existing garage might actually be further than 35 feet, but yeah, it's this corner of the barn right here.
Ah, okay.
It's like 34 and change, it's really close, so we could just, you know, lop off the corner there. But we would, we would either demolish the barn, or we would pull this back, but we will definitely make sure that there's 35-feet difference, and however that wants to be written into the condition, we're okay with.
So I'll give you feedback on the flopping of the barn and the tennis court. And I'm just one person here?
Mm-hmm.
But I would never approve the tennis court over there. So you've got a big road to overcome if you want to continue down the road of putting the tennis court over there. So I think the path of least resistance, and I think you will have a much better project in the end, is flip-flopping those, and I would support that concept. Again, I'm one of five up here, but it's not the location for it. You know, what we would be looking for is if you did put the sports court over there to do some kind of screening on it to soften it a little bit, because it's still going to be fairly visible from, from the street, but obviously, you've got the task of trying to do that without putting it too high and blocking that beautiful view. So that's, that's my input to you for whatever it's worth. Second, I noticed in the pictures that there were no olive trees. Have we moved away from...
Oh, I, they just haven't been rendered in. Once we figure out the barn and the court situation, then we'll circle back with the landscape design, and, because it's, it's going to be changed to address the court screening and the...
Okay.
But there's definitely all of these.
You're, you're going to get pushed back if you start to put trees and olive trees and blocking that view, so just...
Yeah.
Something to consider as you're moving ahead with your plans.
Sorry, can I ask for clarification? So the court, you won't approve... So the court, you won't approve on, uh, the...
It's just one person's, one person's opinion.
Of Possum Ridge, but you would approve it adjacent to the house?
I would support. And again, I'm just, I'm just one. This is just me talking as one commissioner, but I, I would, I think it's, I think you're gonna end up with a better project.
Mm-hmm.
I think your kids are gonna be on that sports court, it's closer to the house, it's easier, it, it, it works better. I think a barn out in that field is gonna be beautiful. If you look at, as you're coming up Portuguese Bend, and you look across that canyon and you look at that barn that's just down from, uh, this location, it's beautiful. I mean, it makes an incredible statement in this, that field, it would look beautiful out there, right?
Yeah.
And we wanna support, it's an equestrian community, we love it when people put, put barns up, so, uh, we, we strongly support that.
Yeah, we think they did a great job. That's over at, um, I think Six Possum Ridge, was right here, that we're showing as the...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's beautiful. I mean, it's, it's, it's a gorgeous barn. So, uh, you know, that's my take on it.
Mm-hmm.
You guys may wanna chime in and...
Okay, if I am, maybe, maybe I'm a little confused, but didn't you suggest putting the sport court over by the house?
Yes.
And the barn over on the right?
Switching the barn and the sports court.
Right. And I'm sorry, you're saying...
He's affirming that.
Okay. I support the decision to flip-flop it.
Okay, I, I agree with that, so, and we can get into the comments later, so, okay.
I don't know if, are we giving...
Well, we're not, we're not going into approving, not approving, but the concept.
Yeah.
I totally support.
Try, try to give some guidance.
Yeah, I totally support, as an equestrian, I'd much rather ride across and see horses in that pasture than the sport court.
Pickleball?
Pickleball, right.
Okay. All right, well, I think you kinda get a sense of the, the, the feelings, so, thank you for modifying it and, um, hear what everybody else has to say. Thank you.
Dan Bolton with Bolton Engineering on behalf of the applicant, and I hear there might be a question for me, so...
How's the, how's the cut so significant on the driveway? I, I get the, the fill on the pool side, 'cause it's a, a steep drop back there and it looks like we're gonna push some dirt up, but, you know, close to two thousand?
Well, the cut comes from two places, uh, with this. It's the basement plus the, uh, plus the driveway. So, and the driveway, you know, currently, that retaining wall between the, the previous corral and the driveway is like a two-foot retaining wall, and then we're pushing it back. Um, the grade goes up, we're sloping it down so that we can stay with the, the wall height, you know, the, the maximum wall heights in the city. But, you know, a thousand square feet of driveway times two feet, and then with the, the basement yardage on top of that.
Okay. I, I only saw red on the upside by the, uh, turner. So, I just, I didn't remember it being that steep there. That seemed like a lot, but, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's not that steep, but, you know, we've got a little bit of a two-to-one slope, I think, above that new retaining wall in order to, to keep the wall height down. And then, yeah, and I, I'm afraid I don't have the numbers in front of me, but, yeah, it's, it's, it's from those two sources.
Okay, 'cause the driveway's not expanded, that is going to thirty-two, I think, from center. So it's not expanded that much, right?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm, I'm kinda just doing this off the top of my head, you know, it's, but I think that that tree, I don't know if we can get the, John, if you can get the, um, the site plan, the, that, the study of the, the two in that driveway area where the question was being posed about the, uh, additional paving for that shed three. Yeah, that's good. So, yeah, I mean, so that tree circle is more or less at the existing edge of driveway.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. I just, I was looking at the, the map and there's just that small shading.
Yeah, the, the, I think the red, yeah, I think the, the, the block of red for the basement might've gotten swamped by the, the shading for the house on that exhibit or something like that.
No problem. That's all I have.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so I'll close the public section and let's have a conversation.
I'll kick it off. I'll start with the, the changes that were made, which, uh, I, I really appreciate thoughtful changes, um, you know, no parking on Possum Ridge, address for the neighbors' concerns. The, uh, movement of the exterior basement, um, was necessary, and I'm sure the pool equipment will, will do fine at the north end of the, the pool there. Swapping of the, potentially swapping of the, the barn and the tennis court makes a ton of sense. And I, I, I do think that it would, uh, be utilized in a better way and aesthetically, it would look much better. In terms of the, the attaching the garage to the house, I, I think we would have to, uh, it's just, it's county code, we have to keep it thirty-five, um, an inhabitable space to, to a, a barn. So we'll have to figure out something that works best for you guys in terms of, of making that work. The height of the house, um, I understand the concern that was raised, uh, but I also understand, you know, from an engineering standpoint, there's, there's certain things you have to do to get that length or width there. So I think overall, it's a, a much better project as presented today, um, in terms of our ability to approve it than, uh, last time around, so I'm encouraged by that.
I'll, uh, go next here. So on the, on the plan, with the house itself, I'm fine with, I'm fine with the height. I grew up in a house with a loft. I have a loft in my house now. I have stairs in both, or stairs in both. And next door, at the association, they have a loft of stairs, so I am fine with that. From an engineering and the plate height and all that stuff, I get it, I'm, I'm fine with that. It's not really blocking anybody's view and the, uh, from a mass standpoint, it looks appropriate. So it, I, I think it's fine. I, I put the stairs back in, but that's, I'm not the guy to make that decision, so I'm just giving you my opinion. Relative to the garage, you know, there's different ways to do it. You can attach for a breezeway, not have living space next door, you know, there's a lot of games you can play to get that garage approved. However, I like the idea of garages because it takes space out, uh, it takes cars out of the driveway. And when they start having kids and you have cars, or, you know, the four-wheelers that people have in the city and some people up here on council, we like garages, 'cause you can park everything inside, and that's just healthier, I think. And we have the room, frankly, to do that. You have an existing structure, it's kinda down below and it's hidden. The, uh, I get the corner now of the, I didn't get that, I thought it was the other garage that had the issue. So I think if you plop that off, but I'd love the change of, and Commissioner Shelph said that last time, it, it was a good idea to switch and go back and forth. And pre, you know, Possum Ridge, it goes right down through, two other people have done the same thing, as you pointed out. So I think that would be great. I also think it's just healthier to have the horses on their own land over here and flies, et cetera, away from the house, and, and that's just more natural, and the kids are right there and they don't have to cross the street. I, I just think that's a no-brainer, in my opinion. So, uh, let's see, on the, on the driveway, the dirt, I get it, the circular driveway, I think that's better access, I don't think it's noticeable, I'm, I'm good with the cut and the fill on that, and I'm okay with the variance for the, uh, based on the yard and the configuration for the pool, et cetera. I think that's it.
Okay.
Well, I'll just say that this is basically my first pass at this project, and from what I see today, it looks like a very thoughtful project, and, um, I do understand, gleaned from the last meeting, that there were some issues of concern, and just in terms of functionality and aesthetics, in terms of the sports court and the, and the barn placement. I'm hearing that since we like the barn across the street, you will likely not have the issue of the thirty-five feet. So I'm not sure if that's a condition we have to put in or not, but, uh, I do totally love the idea of the barn across the street. And, um, you may have, I mean, it just depends on the silhouette of that at that time, how it impacts the view, but that's, that's certainly something to work with and not a problem. So, and all the other comments I, I agree with.
Great, thank you. So, um, I, I, I appreciate you listening, I appreciate you trying to make modifications to it. We are going to have to put a condition in for the garage and, and the barn. And I get your concern that you don't wanna, say you're gonna take that barn down to build your garage and then we don't grant you another barn, and now you've given away something different. So I, I gotta talk with council here to figure out exactly how we go about doing that, but I, I, I think we can work through it. You know, as for the height of the, the ridge line, um, and, and they, they addressed it as well, when you're trying to span a certain distance, it, it, it affects the ridge line. And what I like about this project and what we so often see is people do a remodel and it looks like a remodel, right? The ridge lines don't line up, you've got the ugly other half that, that now is overshadowed by the new half. And you, you're doing a good job of trying to create a structure that looks like a new structure. And so I think that you have to do the ridge line that you have to tie it all together. We don't allow second stories. My, my partner's gone rogue on me here, but, uh, so don't put a stairway in and, and don't have a second floor. There's always one. And, you know, other than that, I, I think it's gonna be a nice project. When you do come back before us for the garage and the tennis court, if you do decide to, to flip it and go in that direction, we, we will work with you to try to figure it out. Obviously, it's still close to the road and a lot of the neighbors, when we approve tennis courts, come in and voice their objection to it. So we're gonna have to do it in such a way that we kind of shield it away from, from the street and kinda soften it. At the same time, you know, we're dealing with another one down the street right now. And, um, when we approve projects, we make sure that the landscaping does not grow above the ridge line. The problem is, if you put something at the ridge line up there, you're blocking this beautiful view. And I understand it's, it's, it's a delicate balance because you want your privacy, but at the same time, we've gotta manage that you, you don't put in a row of trees that block the, the beautiful view from Crest. So we'll deal with that at another time, obviously, but, um, but I, I, I support the project, so, anybody wanna make a motion?
Um, before we do, John, um, within the, I, I was just reading through the resolution, within the current resolution, do we have a call yet, or do we need to specify that for the, um...
Thirty-five feet.
...closed garage not to, um...
No.
You can suggest, so, um...
And so I can, uh, and my apology for that, I, I think I had emailed, um, Megan about it, um, you know, talking about putting it in there though, but still have to get in there. So I can, I can draft a condition, like, read it into the record and we can include that.
So we can make a resolution subject to...
Yeah.
...that being included.
Uh, and then, the other piece about, uh, construction vehicles, is that, we need to add that as a condition as well?
Yes, we can, we can add that. So if you'd like, I can read it to the record.
Isn't that per our guidelines, though, or, I mean, i- isn't it always stated that when you do a project, you've got to park the cars on-site? I mean, I think that's in our code.
Well, I mean, we do allow them to park on the shoulder as long as it's off of the, the road. I know in certain instances, but I can't right now...
I thought we had language in there that said that they had to do their best efforts or they had to park off-site or on-site and not on the, on the road.
I think we do, but technically on-site.
Okay, well, we can add it just to be, can't park in the street.
Yeah.
Park in the eastments, the setbacks.
Which is on-site, but, um, okay. Will you do me a favor then and, and read into the record what you'd propose as the conditions for those two?
Sure. Yeah, so I would recommend that the commission include a resolution, um, A-O, which reads, "Prior to plan check submitted, the applicant shall demolish a portion of the garage or a portion of the stable in order to meet the thirty-five-foot separation requirement." And in terms of the parking, I would also add, uh, condition A-P at the very end, that there shall be no construction parking on Possum Ridge Road, and just leave it at that.
For the first one, uh, from the main residence. But then, separation requirement from, just specifying what...
Okay, a portion of the, the main residence, okay. So instead of garage, it'll be main residence, because the garage technically can be part of the residence.
Okay. I'd like to present a motion to adopt resolution number two zero two four dash zero five, with the additional amendments, A-O and A-P, as read into the record.
Second. Great, you wanna do roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Kardnis?
Approve.
Commissioner Cooley?
Approve.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Chair Shelph?
Yes.
Motion, yes, great.
Thank you.
Kids are gonna love it. Yes, they're awesome, thank you.
Thank you. So, nine B, this is zoning case number two-three, uh, dash zero-seven-zero, and this is for twenty-three Crest Road East. Just overview?
Okay. We have Stephanie here, um, to give the presentation, but this is also a continued item, it was continued from the meeting on January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Hi, thank you, um, for leaving. Honorable Chair Shelph and commissioners, like I said, this project is continued from the January sixteenth, um, twenty-twenty-four planning and commission meeting. Um, the planning commission directed staff to work with the applicant to, um, revise the plans and actually address some of the issues at that meeting. Subject property is located on the southwest portion of the city. It is one of the last undeveloped and vacant lots in the city on Crest Road. Um, the subject property is zoned RAS-two, and the total net lot area is two thousand six, two, two hundred thousand sixty-two, three hundred and sixty-eight square feet or six-point-two acres. Um, the lot is approximately eight hundred and twenty feet deep and approximately four hundred and eighty feet wide, and the site is accessible from a driveway access that fronts onto Crest Road East. Public notices were sent out to all of the residents within a thousand-foot radius on April fifth, twenty-twenty-four. A little project background, back in twenty-seventeen, the project was approved, which was zoning case number, um, ZC-nine-oh-two. It was approved for eleven thousand, um, five hundred square foot residence and also eleven thousand five foot, square foot basement. In twenty-nineteen, uh, the project, the planning commission granted an extension, uh, that was extended till January twenty-three, um, twenty-twenty-one. Was also granted another extension in July of twenty-twenty-two. That project didn't go through, but, and, and actually in twenty-twenty-one, and there was another application that was submitted, um, for another, uh, project. This one was for zoning case number twenty-one dash eleven, which was for an eight thousand four hundred and sixty square foot residence and, uh, eight hundred and forty, forty, eight thousand four hundred and sixty square foot basement. And I believe the project was actually sold, and on June second of twenty-twenty-three, we, uh, staff received a new application for a site plan review and variance for zoning case number twenty-three dash zero-seventy, which is the project that we're presenting tonight. And, uh, on December eleventh, the traffic commission approved the new driveway in Apron, that's on, um, Crest Road East. And then, so this is, like I said, this was a continuation from Jan, the January sixteenth, uh, meeting. Um, there were some, these were some of the issues that were raised from January sixteen. The mound at the center of the oval driveway, that was addressed for, by the applicant, but at the field trip meeting this morning, it was also brought up again. Also, one of the concerns was the residents at Seventeenth Crest Road West-East express their concerns with the privacy and the proximity of the proposed, um, barn to their property. That was actually revised by the applicants as well. The basement projection, that has not changed. The discrepancies with the grading calculations and applications and plans, that has been revised by the applicant. The mixed-use structure, the proposed, uh, stable... The mixed-use structure, the proposed stable in the front, it's actually now just a stable. They were proposing to have a mixed-use structure, but now it's just, the use is just strictly stable. The guest house, there was the guest house, the proposed guest house was actually close to, closer into the actual canyon. That was actually been, the applicants actually addressed the issues with the guest house. It's been shifted over sixteen feet north and four feet over to the west. There were retaining walls that were over, located along the stable. Those were actually added to the plans. The floor level of the, the raised decks, that has been also addressed by the applicants. Let's see, some of the revisions to the main house. The applicants revised the plans to address the concerns by the traffic, by the planning commission. They shifted the existing main footprints of the residence, twelve feet and five inches to the north and also four feet, five inches to the east. They were concerned with the proximity to the canyon, of the, of the house, of, I mean, the house, the proximity of the house to the canyon, to the both, both the east and the west wings. They also moved the stable away from the property lines as well, too. As for the main house, the finished floor elevations, the finished floor was actually raised two feet. So, and the, yeah, and the building size was also changed as well. The proposed building, including the basement, was, was twenty thousand nine hundred and forty square feet. They increased it up to twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty square feet. Okay, so here's a summary of the approvals that are needed for this project. Site plan review. First, the site plan review is for, is required for the new residence, the basement attached garage. That's, the pool is not actually, the pool's only three hundred and fifteen square feet, so it's actually part of an administrative review and then the other appurtenances. The oval driveway, that's part of the site plan review. The oval driveway was, has, was proposed at seventeen thousand seven hundred square feet. It's been decreased to thirteen thousand four hundred and eighty square feet. Grading, the grading has also been changed. The grading is to be balanced, well, it's not, actually, there is some export for the grading. Grading has changed from slightly decreased. The grading was at twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty cubic yards total. Now it's at twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-five cubic yards total. There's also a conditional use permit for the stable, but that's actually, like I said, it's actually been changed just to stable use. They decreased the size of the stable from one thousand nine hundred and forty square feet. Now the proposed stable is one thousand two hundred and twenty-five square feet. The corral's been increased to five thousand one hundred and ninety square feet and also the guest house is five hundred and forty square feet. There's also variances because a portion of the pool, the stable and the corral encroach into the front yard and the retaining walls, there's retaining walls that actually exceed the average height of two and a half feet. The decks and the patios that are more than above grade and grading export for the non-exempt grading. Although there were some minor changes to the lot coverage and disturbance, the project does comply with the development standards of the zoning code, with the exception of the three building pads that exceed the thirty percent maximum guideline. The applicants actually wanted, made the building pads a little smaller to decrease the disturbance on the, on the land. All right, so this right here is the, where's the pointer at, John? Oh, thank you. All right, now if you can, this is not that hard to see, but, so here, let me, as, this is the fifty-foot setback right here, front setback. Like I said, the project does, no, this is the setback right here. This is, that's the easement and then this is the front setback. Fifty-foot front setback right here. So a portion of this, the corral and the stable encroach into the front yard setback. The grading quantities have decreased for this project. This was a grading quantities from the previous, which was back in January of January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. And then these are the grading quantities for, that are proposed now. This is a side sectional of the project looking down from Crest Road East. And as you can see from the approved design from before in twenty seventeen, the project was previously approved in twenty seventeen. The pad is, this is looking down from Crest Road. The, as you, and as you can see, the proposed, the, the new building pad is lower than what it was proposed back before in twenty seventeen, the design. The proposed, the, there is a proposed mound that will also provide a gentle privacy screening and that was actually brought up at the field trip meeting this morning. It was a concern of the planning commission that the mound was actually high. So the applicants have agreed that they would like to lower, lower the proposed mound. And this is the main residence. The main residence has been integrated into the existing slope to minimize grading and the land disturbance. So it's like a V-shaped house, which is, it's integrated into this existing slope. There's a west wing and there's the east wing here. The apex of the house is located at the point of the natural slope. Then the square footage of the house is thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty. It has, it's a ranch-style house with a thousand square foot attached garage, five bedrooms, six bathrooms and three powder rooms. It also has, I believe there are eight-foot wide eaves and patios, decks and a three hundred and fifteen, three, three hundred and fifteen square foot swimming pool, that which is located at the northwest portion of the site. Also, below is a basement, right below the apex of the house. So here's the basement floor plan right here and the square footage of the basement is eight thousand two hundred and forty square feet. The new residence, the basement and attached garage will be developed and the lower portion of the pad. The maximum ridge height of the elevations is twelve point nine inches and the ridge line of the house is going to be thirty-one feet below Crest Road East. The main residence, the basement and the atrium are located at the V section of the main residence. And the guest house, there's also a guest house. Project proposes a guest house and an A D U. The guest house is going to be thirteen feet, two inches in height and the ridge line is about thirty-one feet below Crest Road East. Guest house, A D U. Oh, there's also a proposed trellis, a four hundred and fifteen square foot trellis, which is going to be located at the bottom of the canyon, like in. There's, for the natural, there's also two storm drains. The, Dan's here to talk more about the storm drains, but they're, they're having, there's systems which will capture the storm water on the site. See, okay, on four, five, twenty-four, the project was noticed in the daily breeze. All notices went out to the residents within a thousand-foot radius. And at the field trip meeting this morning, there were a total of nine non-members. Not, I mean, there was nine, there were nine people in attendance. Some areas of concern this morning were the height of the mound, the lowering of the mound and increasing possibly the export of dirt to lower the mound, the height of the proposed trees that would be on the mound. And then there was also an underground door that led out from the basement. Those were some of the concerns. The project is categorically exempt due to new construction of single-family residences and accessory structures. So it's recommended that we, planning commission, open the public hearing and invite for public comments and then provide direction to staff and the applicants. So if you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Just wanted to confirm, the guest house was reduced from eight hundred and forty square feet to five, five hundred?
Yeah, that was, that was an error on my part. The, the guest house is actually five hundred and forty square feet.
So it was moved northwest?
It was moved.
Shrunk, is that?
I think, yes.
We had questions today on the, on the basement and particularly being outside the footprint of the building. Should we address that? Let the architect address that?
No, the architect is going to do their presentation right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Okay, so this time I'm going to open it up to the public. If you'd like to speak, please come up, state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Frank Asher. I'm one of the principals of Asher Gune Wardena Architecture. The other principal is Ravi Gune Wardena. And also from our office is David Ramis, who's the project manager. Our client, Yuki Kasawara is also here, she will say a few words. And the civil engineer, Dan Bolton, is also here, who I know you all know, and he will also say a few words. I know that many of you were here last time, so the beginning is what you saw earlier. Try to make this full, well, doesn't matter. View from, from the site. This is a list of our consultants. Just to introduce ourselves, this is some of the work that we do. We do a lot of historic preservation. Top left, John Lautner's hemisphere. Bottom left, John Lautner's own house that we're restoring. Center, lower level is the Neutra nineteen twenty-nine Lovell Health House that we're restoring. Center, top is the Eames House that we worked on. Top right is the house that Paul Williams built for himself that we restored. And bottom right is the house by A Quincy Jones that we restored for our client, Yuki Kasawara, and she still lives there. This is another project that we did. We were recommended by the Franklin Dwight Foundation to do a replacement building for the Arch Obeler Estate, which burnt down in the Woolsey Fire. The project that we did works with the existing footprint and incorporates some of the surviving walls of the original house. Some of the information that I think Stephanie already explained. The site, which we analyzed at the beginning of the project because we feel very strongly that a house needs to be composed respectfully into the land. And we looked at the topography and then determined where the building should sit. And so at this point, I'll talk about the model. I should add that the model shows the previous site. Now, I'll show later the previous site plan and the revised site plan. It's at this scale, it's, it's really perceptible. So I think that, I hope that you will accept that this is a slightly outdated model. So the idea again is that we follow the natural topography. At this point, the living room is five feet off the ground, which is what the maximum that we're allowed to do. Then it moves back and this wing again follows the natural topography. The way the house is organized is you arrive, there's a motor court here. This is essentially public spaces. There is a atrium here. There are a number of different atria that are proposed to be landscaped, bring light into the center of the building as well as they're used for ventilation. On the west, we have first the kitchen, then we have our client's mother's bedroom and various guest rooms. And on the left, we have first a library and studio space and the master bedroom suite. The stable that was talked about earlier, this is the building that we had previously, which was larger. We also changed the rotation a little bit because we felt that this corner here was sticking too far out of the ground. By rotating it to what you saw this morning, it follows more naturally the, the topography. The A D U, which is here, which hasn't changed, and the guest house, which has moved back and I'll show you some images in a second of how that actually looks like. So a reminder, this is the project that was approved in twenty seventeen and this is the section of our project. And I just want to point out for, you know, for the record that both the house that we're proposing as well as the mound are actually lower than the previously approved design. Nevertheless, as we discussed this morning, after a visit to the site, our client and we felt that we should lower the mound and we talked about that with some of you this morning. The mound as it is does not obstruct the view of the horizon, but we wanted to make sure that we also saw from the street where the land actually meets the sea. This is a little film and, does it work if? Maybe, I'll, we'll come back to that later. I'll just go through this here. We, we have a little film that shows the view as you move along the road and it shows you where the mound is and how it affects or doesn't affect the view. These are some renderings. This is a view from about here. So what you see is at the bottom right, this is the stable. And you see here, this is the, what you see from the street. Well, actually, at this point, you're standing on the property, I'm sorry. This is what you see of the house. This is what you see of the house from about this point. And I should add that these renderings have been revised. So they are actually based on the slightly higher floor level. Just to make that very clear, that this is, the floor is at twelve ninety-three. And this is the view from below and you see here, this is this apex. And I should add that what is in this apex is, as Stephanie explained, there are some spaces right in the apex. It's actually a screening room, so no windows for the, for that space. And then the other spaces are lit by, from, from this. And then the other spaces are lit by, from, from this atrium. I will pass over this because it's better that Dan explains that in a second, if you don't mind. Thank you. This, I can briefly speak about this. Dan can speak more about the cut and fill. I should say that, and I mentioned it to some people this morning, that the idea of the mound really came out of wanting to minimize the amount of export, to reduce the export of the soil. And that's where this idea came from, to create this topographical feature in, in the front. The idea is that this is, you know, a little bit of a walkway. There's the water feature here, so that one can sit up here to kind of look at the view. Not here today, but at the last meeting, our, our landscape designers, Teremoto, they are based in San Francisco. They have office in Los Angeles. They do some, some very small and some very, very large projects, park-like projects. Their interest and approach is really to very carefully study both the plant, as well as animal life in, in the region, and to really work with the context and sort of, and bring plants that are appropriate to the site, appropriate to the climate, that do not rely on enormous amount of water. So this is the plant palette. These were the items that were brought up last time, and since I think Stephanie already walked through that, I maybe won't go into great detail. If I may, I just want to explain that the guest house was actually always five hundred and forty square feet. It was, I think mistakenly called out as eight hundred square feet in the previous. But it's, it's, so that's, just to make that clear. The trellis that was mentioned is, there is right around here, there is an existing sort of level-ish area. And we think that sometime a few decades ago, a road was cut going down here. And you can see that in the, in the survey, you can walk down there. And, excuse me, excuse me. And, and so this is where we are proposing to have this little place that is really to meditate and to see the sunset. One change from last meeting to today's meeting, the question that came up in the last meeting was that they, it was requested that we actually flack the mound. That was, that was the, the question that was brought up. The retaining wall at the stable that we added, and I explained that this morning to some people, we enter from the driveway and we walk the horses on the uphill side to the back. The stable is in the back area. And at this point here, we are level with the existing ground. And so horses can just go out into the paddock. Excuse me. We have a, I think nationally-known horse expert who was very excited about that the paddock is actually on a slope because it's better for the horses if the rainwater goes down and, and it doesn't sort of pond. And so we've been discussing various things with her. I also want to add that the paddock or the corral has not increased. You mentioned in the, in the presentation, now that it went from, I think.
It was two thousand and it came up to five thousand one hundred and ninety.
I think it's the same issue with the guest house, that it, it's planned as option?
It, yeah, it's, it's, it's always been, it's always been this oval right here. So this shows these different paths, and this is where this proposed trellis is. Again, this here, and you can even see this as this scale. You can see that there is sort of an existing path that was cut in there. I don't think it's natural. I think it's just, it was done a few decades ago. And so we're taking advantage to lead to this area where the ground levels out a little bit more. And this is where we're proposing to have this little structure. This is indicating the various changes that we did. I think that was covered. What, one question that came up was that the guest house appears to be still close to, to the ravine or where the ground drops off. And so what I wanted to point out with these three images is that, again, this is, all of this is natural ground. This is a cut at twelve ninety-three. And this here is level. This is where the house is. And so this is actually where this guest house is. And you can see here that it is actually, we think, far enough away from, from, from the ravine. I know that you, you brought up the five-foot area that cannot be planted for fire code reasons, which we can very easily accommodate. And then on the other side, this here is actually regraded. So currently, the ground is higher, which is why the guest house currently seems to be sitting kind of in, in the ground. But the, the reason is that because this here is actually being lowered. This is the proposed new plan for the stable. And, and this is an image that we added today, and it had to do with this question about this exit. So by code, we have to have a level exit from, from the basement. And what we are proposing to do is kind of the absolute minimal sort of incision. And that allows access, or allows one to exit in an emergency from this point here. This is the hill without any vegetation. This is with the vegetation, which some of it is existing and others are, are trees that we would probably plant there. So we don't think that this is going to be visible. And we really don't think that that was, will be sort of seen as a second story. So if, David, could you help me with the movie, please? Be good, full screen. Great. So this is moving from the east to the west, I'm sorry, from the west to the east. So this, at this point, you see the stable, and down below, you see the house. And again, this is the mound as it currently is staked out. So at this point, the house disappears and then reappears just about now. And, well, just, yeah. So you see this is the apex and the master wing, and then this is the ADU. Again, this was changed from the last presentation. This actually shows all of the revisions. So now, if I may, I'm, I'm going to go back to the earlier presentation and go to the image so that Dan can speak about water issues, if that is all right with everyone. But I will need help to get to that because I have no idea what it is.
Actually, I can probably do it without the slide. Can I ask a quick question on the basement, that photo there of the basement access?
Yeah.
You said, is it, is it mainly or a hundred percent just for emergency purposes?
Look, it's also, it's for people to be able to get in and out. There's a.
Is that by that little road down to the area you were talking about?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, this is a large property. There's, we're proposing sort of walkways. And, and some of those will have to be wheelchair-accessible for Yuki's mother. We do have an elevator that goes from the upper level down to the basement. And this is actually a way to get, you know, somebody in a wheelchair in and out. It's, there's, it, it's not a source of light or anything like that. I mean, we, we really don't want this to sort of be visible as a, you know, access point. The, the whole point is really to, to sort of allow easy access in and out and to provide the emergency exit that is required by code.
How would you get a wheelchair down there?
There is an elevator that is about.
Understand, but you, I mean, you're not going to have a wheelchair person ingress and egress out of that.
Well, not shown, not shown on, I mean, thi- this is, this is a render that we did today. It's a, you know, a matter of a few hours. We have paths at, at, uh, down below. But, so this here, there will be paths that are wheelchair-accessible. It's not shown on there. But, yeah, I mean, that's, is. Are there other questions, or should I kind of hand it over to Dan?
Any questions?
What's the current thought process on reducing the mound?
I'm sorry?
The current thought process on reducing the mound.
So currently, the highest point is about eleven feet above the existing topography, which makes it more or less level with the street. So it is, it is level with the street. And, and again, when you're standing on the street, I mean, you have a full, unobstructed view of the horizon and of Catalina. Absolutely unobstructed. I mean, it's, it's, it's much, much further down. Again, this is lower than the previously approved house. But in any case, we have decided that we're going to lower this by several feet. We're, we're going to work this out exactly. We're thinking of lowering it maybe to six feet above ground. That's.
Six feet, and what is it now?
It's eleven feet above ground, the high point. This will increase the amount of soil that we're exporting. And, and, and I know that that will be a whole other conversation, but that's, that's, we think that that is a trait that is worth doing.
And in the video you displayed, it didn't show any planting on top of the mound. It showed some smaller trees, shrubs that kind of dotted the edges of the mound at the top of the mound. Was that the intent?
So, so, yeah, actually, these are pre, previous hearing. The planting was brought up at the last hearing. And, and a lot of the, this sort of grass that exists here is proposed to be, to, to stay and to be on the mound. So that's, that's what we're proposing. There may be one or two strategically-placed trees. It's not, it's not the, the, this little stand of, of, of trees that is shown on this old model. But, yeah.
If you didn't have an issue with exporting of any dirt, would you still want the mound?
Yes. Because there is, there is one thing that we, we do want to give the house a little bit of privacy. We don't want the house to be too exposed from the street. But it, we want to do this in a, as, you know, low-key fashion as possible. And, and the, we're also aware of the fact that it is a fairly long house because it follows the topography and we, so it's not a very, very deep house. The previous building was much, much, much deeper and shorter. And so because of that, we, we, we think that sort of interrupting the view, so to speak, of the building is actually a good thing. So, so, yes, we, we, we think we would want to have a mound lit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hand it over to Dan for a second?
That'd be great.
And I can come back for questions afterwards if there are any.
Thank you.
I'm Dan Bolton with Bolton Engineering on behalf of the applicant. As many or all of you know, the stormwater on this site has been subject to kind of extensive discussion, calculation, and analysis, both from the 2017 project as well as the 2021 project. I'm happy to get into as much detail as the commission likes, but I don't want to belabor the point, except to say that we're continuing with the same strategy as has been hashed out with those previous projects of storing the excess twenty-five-year storm, that the full volume difference, and using it for irrigation so as to ameliorate the impacts to the water courses below that have been of significant concern and rightly so. What's new with this project, and it was discussed at the previous meeting in January, is the applicant has directed us to engage in design for the treatment and reuse of as much wastewater as can practically be done. You know, and that's subject to the requirements of the Los Angeles Department of Health. But that being said, the design that's in front of you on the slide on the screen represents an effort to divert gray water from the house. That was a concern that was expressed in the twenty, I don't recall it being expressed in the 2017 application, but it was definitely a subject of conversation back in 2021 of, well, what happens with the effluent that's being injected into the ground? And what concern? How can we mitigate that? So this applicant has elected to try to reuse as much of that as can practically be done. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
So it, it's safe to say that with these storage units, basically, the bulk of the water that's going to be hitting the solid surfaces is probably going to go into those tanks, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then those tanks will store it, and whether it gets used on-site or it eventually gets pumped out after the storm has passed, that, that's kind of the concept. I mean, it's a very simple concept, but that's kind of what, what they do, right? So there is, is huge concern. The city's under tremendous pressure to make sure that we're not throwing, you know, these big developments in that's throwing more water down into the canyon. And what we try to educate people on is that, one, everything goes through the county, right? So it's all reviewed by them. But, but two, actually, by building structures like this, you are actually helping the flow of water to prevent it from going down below and doing damage to the tenants below. And we've also got not only the existing tenants within the city, but we've got some problems going on below that as well. So we're very sensitive to that. But what I try to educate people on that don't know how these systems work is that you are creating a much better scenario for rain and runoff than currently exists.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. And in addition, what I might add is, you know, inasmuch as the county reviews this, their standard is for what they call the eighty-fifth percentile storm, which in this area is roughly eight tenths of an inch that has to be stored. is roughly eight tenths of an inch that has to be stored. The city, through the process with the Heinz family in 2017 and Darkmoon Ranch in 2021, has directed us to store the difference of the 25-year storm, which is a much larger storm. The result of that is both that you're mitigating a larger design storm if and when, and, you know, we all know when is the, you know, from the last two winters, when it comes through. But the secondary effect of that is that smaller storms that pass through don't discharge at all. So even if the, the ground is saturated and in the existing condition, all that water would run off by virtue of the fact that it's a saturated clay, with the tanks in place, you're not seeing any runoff from the site, from the, at least from the developed portion of the site that's, you know, upstream of the tanks, because the tanks are there to capture the water. So yes, I think it's fair to say that this improves the condition in the bulk of situations relative to how it is now.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Nice to see you again.
May I come back and ask?
You may come up. Just state your name so we can...
For the record. Yes, so this is Frank Escher again. Thank you, Dan, for explaining the drainage. I just want to add that there is an interest in making a house that is as sustainable as possible. So for example, we are looking at a geothermal heating and cooling system. And we are actually exploring the idea of a onsite wastewater treatment facility that would allow us to use the water to flush toilets. So this is not something that has been fully worked out yet. We're not in that phase yet. But this is the direction that we are exploring. And we have been working with the mechanical MEP engineers, PAE, they're based in Portland. They are internationally known for the, their environmentally sensitive approach. We also have, as a wastewater and stormwater consultant, Kevin Poffenberger, who was one of the people who wrote the stormwater ordinance for the city of Santa Monica. And so between Dan and Kevin and the people that we're working with, we feel that we can be as, as, as careful as possible to sort of manage water and, and make sure that we are not in any way contributing to the issue that we're very well aware of. We've been, we've had conversations with neighbors, and this was also brought up at the last meeting, but we are very, very aware that this is an issue that we have to work with.
So while you're, while you're up, I've got a couple of questions for you. One, and it may be for you as well. My understanding is that the, the basement is going beyond the footprint of the house and it's actually, it's under the roof line, but it's not under the structure. How does our code read and work? And technically, is it by being under a covered roof underneath the structure and therefore it's okay?
Can I, can I maybe just add to the definition? So first of all, the basement only goes from here to about here. So this, there is no basement underneath here or underneath here. And the, the base, so we have eight-foot overhangs, eaves. And we have this terrace that is also eight feet. And that is where the, the edge of the basement is. So it is technically, and I'm sorry, it's only in this particular area here. So the, the basement is, in most cases, exactly at the footprint of the house, eight feet away from the eaves, and only at this point here where we have a large covered indoor, a large covered outdoor space does it extend out. Is there a deck that extends out? And this is where the, this portion of the basement is that is beyond the roof line. So it's right, it's really just like this, this part here.
So what is, what is our interpretation of code?
So my understanding is that the basement has to be underneath the footprint of the building. And in this case, there's a portion there that's a covered patio. So it's covered, there's, it's covered on, by three sides. There's three walls there, but it's open on one side. And that basement portion is underneath that covered patio in that area. And that's also where you get the, the exit way leading out from the basement.
So you couldn't, you can't approve with a variance? Is that a variance?
It's, yes, we included as, as a variance.
Has that been asked? Is that part of the variances?
It's part of the variances, yes. So you can consider if you want it underneath that covered patio or not.
But our code is such that it is, is, is the covered patio considered a part of the structure? That it can be under that or does it have to be under the walls?
Mine are saying we already have the code as it has to be under, under the walls.
That's what, that's what I thought. Okay. And then my, my, my second question to you is, we have not done any caves, tunnels like this. And typically where we have them come out from under a house, we, we have it come out, but we put some sort of a wall in front of it to hide it so that it doesn't look like a two-story house. And I don't know if you could do something like that to shield it. We, we've, the problem is we've made other people adhere to that. And we start veering away from that, we start to create a lot of problems for ourselves.
If there are particular guidelines on how this should be handled, I mean, we are happy to, to look at that and, and, and work, work that in. Because again, this is not about providing a view or anything like that.
I get it. And I want to be sympathetic to getting out there and getting access down. I understand the wheelchair comment now, or is that, that you're willing grandma down the path and anyways.
And I just wanted to point out that the, the area that is, so this here is kind of a, a large covered outdoor space that sort of, it's pulled into the building. And then, so on one side, this is the kitchen, this is the mother's bedroom. So this is, this is where there is this kind of large covered outdoor space. And in this particular place, this is where the deck extends out. And this is where we were suggesting that this basement comes out. It helps with the structure, but if this is an issue, we can cut this back easily. It's not, that's, I mean, it's not a big, a big issue for us.
I'm curious, was the elevator going to be set in that area?
No. No, the elevator is really, so what you see there is really, is right here. It's right here. The elevator is back here. So this, so, so, so the elevator is kind of in the back of the, of this covered outdoor space.
But in close proximity to where it's needed?
Well, yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. But, but, but it's, it's, it's set into the, into the building. Because, because this here is, is quite deep and can probably actually find it on a plan. This here, it's not really visible though. The one with the red, okay, great. So this here is this covered outdoor space that we're talking about. This is where the kitchen is. This is the suite for the mother. And the back wall of this here is a solid mass that contains a powder room, it contains a pantry for the kitchen, and it also contains the elevator. So the elevator, it's, it's accessed from, from the back, and then you go down, and then on the lower level, it's from here you ex, you, you go out like that.
So what, what is the square footage of the basement that is not underneath the roof line?
To ask. That's not under the...
About 150 square feet or something.
Sean, wouldn't that be in the variance? Is there, it's a variance for X square feet, correct?
That is correct, yes. Yeah, we noticed it in the, as part of the notice. In terms of the square footage, I mean, you can kind of tell from the plan, in terms of size.
150 to 200 square feet.
That one.
It should, it's on the grade calculations.
I can't measure it from, from the scale here. But yeah, four hundred square feet is roughly the size of a two-car garage.
So that's the area inside the house that is outside the walls, but still underneath the overhang of the house?
Yeah, exterior deck.
Yes. But the deck, does the deck and the basement extend beyond the overhang of the house?
No.
It's under, it's under the overhang. And I'm assuming that that area that's open, you've got your basement on both sides. So if you don't enclose that, you can't connect it? Is that kind of what happens?
Sort of, yes. We, it would be difficult to connect it.
Right, well, around... So you lose the flow?
I'm not sure I understand the same that you do. Based on the picture up there, it looks like it's extending the basement out to follow the patio lines and then the exit, the subterranean exit coming out there. It's, if they were to eliminate it, they'd just be pushing the basement, the, that one exterior wall in to align with the, the rest of the structure.
Well, but I think as you go in, that inside is open too. Right? But it's under, underneath the roof line. So two, two concepts, two conversations.
But the deck again, the edge of that deck, that white deck right there is underneath the overhang of the house.
So most, most of the...
Yeah, the basement does extend, at least from a hallway standpoint, the, the basement extends to the outside all the way to the exit. But as Sean said, that, that extends beyond the roof line.
Yeah.
So most of...
Our covered area, so goes from this point to this point and it extends into the house. So most of this is under the roof. There is one section that shuts out by about five feet.
Those are the two pieces.
Five, six feet, that's what you see here.
And that is, that is beyond the roof line.
So that's, and, and again, we, we have a foundation wall here.
It's not, it's not an absolute necessity that we push the basement out here. We would need to make the tunnel longer. If this wall is pushed back, we just make the...
You know, the, the bottom part of this, instead of to here, it would go from here to something in line with this here. So it's not an insurmountable problem for us. It really isn't. But, but if, if, if it creates an issue, setting precedence or anything like that, I mean, we will just cut that back. It's not a problem. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. So I've been speaking a lot and Yuki, did you want to say?
Hi there, good evening. I'm Yuki Ogasawara, and I am the, the resident that's hopefully going to be moving here in a few years' time. I just wanted to meet you all, and first of all, apologize that I couldn't be there for the morning meeting, and so I wanted to make sure I was here today, make sure I met anybody that I didn't get to meet from the last meeting. And just mention, I think as I was kind of listening to everything, I just wanted to say that this is, this is a dream project for me. It really is. I'm very, very excited to, to come here and to be part of the community. And I, I really feel very sensitive to all the needs of the community. I really love the fact that Rolling Hills has, you know, kept and maintained its integrity for all these years. I think it's wonderful, and it's a very special place, and I do want to respect that very much, and especially with the neighbors that's, you know, has their concerns. And so therefore, I think you can see that I've pretty much chosen some very, very talented, very sensitive architects and landscape designers to really be able to translate all these things into something that is going to be really a beautiful, beautiful space and a functional space. But as Frank mentioned, a very sustainable, I'm very interested in making the house as sustainable as possible and, and looking into all kinds of, you know, green energy alternatives and resources that we can do today that we should be doing in 2024. So I'm kind of looking at all these things and working with some very, very interesting, talented people that do kind of integration of design and, and engineering and, and all kinds of high-tech things that we have access to today. So it's a very, just a really dream project, a big project. But just very, very, I just wanted to also thank you for, you know, listening to us and, and taking the time, and we look forward to working with you more, and we look forward to being able to make this, create the, the house that we want together. So, and I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you in the community.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we'll close the public portion. Who would like to start?
I'll kick it off. I very much appreciate all, all the changes. I think from day one, we were kind of happy about, that they worked with us. I love the idea of what it, what they're trying to do. I think it actually is good for Rolling Hills at the same barrier. So I think what, what ends up happening, regardless of what we approve here, I think it's going to be one of those landmark properties and great for the city, particularly the sustainability side, and particularly with everything with the rains and all the stuff we're gonna, they're gonna do to protect from a water standpoint will be benefit. On the variances, I think the site's unique in that it gets pushed down the hill, so all the front yard setbacks, all the changes they did to the corral, the barn, ADU, and the guest house, I'm fine with. When it comes to the basement, I think it's so unique in the, that every, I don't, I'm not worried about setting any kind of precedent because I think every house that we've ever looked at this is so unique that, and we have the time and to, to look at these and not worry about that we're allowing something here that we wouldn't allow even next door. Because I think this one is not viewed. I, I think the entrance to it can be modified where they actually, the one on Pine Tree was changed from an open door. It was changed to a jog and a wall, and that landscaped wall, it was very, very less visible because you have that slope going up the hill and it just makes it look bigger than really what it is. So I think that could be changed. I'm okay with it going underneath the patio and even extending. I think that's justified. I think it helps with the flow underneath. I wouldn't care about where it starts and stops. You guys will have the right people to do it, waterproofing and all that stuff. That's not an issue. I just think it's a, it's a, it's a standalone issue on project to project, and I'm fine with this one being that way.
As far as the mound goes and the hill, I think there's some conversation still needs to be tweaked out. I don't know if you're going to revisit that, come back with a different plan, with the, the element of the landscaping added on top. Even if you pull it down to six feet high, I'm, I'm still very interested to see how that would look. In a way, to me, I know you're adding it for privacy on that other side, but given all the buildings that are on this space... but given all the buildings that are on this space because you're not using the lower part of the property, it seems like another building in a way to me. It kind of adds more mass, even though it's natural. So that's an area of concern in terms of how you'd work that out. I think Greg did a good job explaining the basement entrance, and that has some ability to be worked with. And I love the stable where it is. I'm hoping to see horses there, and that will be enjoyed by everyone who walks by. And it is an iconic piece of property. So it's your property, but I think we all feel like we have a little piece of it. So thank you for being so thoughtful in creating this project. I think there's just a few things that need to be fine-tuned.
I think it's an amazing project and looking forward to approving the right final solution. On the mound, which is, you know, my main concern, if we're reducing it and doing natural grasses, you know, the natural landscape, that reduces my concern as opposed to the mound plus stuff on top. And I get that you want to shield the house. I think it was thirty-one feet, they said, below the crest. So it's, you know, the ridge line is thirty-one feet below crest. So that's significantly lower. So anything along that slope, whether there's a mallow or just some vegetation, should obscure the view. And I'm in favor of that because the house is so low on the property. And the other, the variances outlined in here, no issue with the setback, front yard setback, encroachments, et cetera. The exit from the basement, I think if it's screened with vegetation versus a, you know, typically, we would, you know, mandate a wall. So you come out and then you exit or go upstairs. But a wall obscures the exit. If it's screened with vegetation, et cetera, I think that would serve the same purpose as having a wall there. Because they put a wall there, we'd have to screen the wall with vegetation anyway. I'm concerned about the cutout for that section of the porter. I think it's to cut into the house and the basement underneath it. If there's a way to, you know, remedy that without changing the aesthetics of the house and the use, et cetera, I'd be more comfortable with it. But on this plan, it does show that it would cut into the basement as it cuts into the house there. But there's still space. It wouldn't create two separate basements. It'd just be a section of the basement that would mirror the house. That would be, have less depth to it. But overall, I'd love the design following the topography of the natural topography of the property. And I think it's going to be a beautiful house.
All right, thank you. So I think it's a world-class design. It's going to be a spectacular house. I remember meeting you two years ago, or whatever it was, when we were developing the last one, and you heard how concerned we were, and we're not headed in the direction of planning that. And you had told me at the time that you were going to do less grading and try to do something that was more in line with the property and the land. And you've done a great job of that. So, you know, I don't have any problem with the mass. You know, it's a big structure. It goes from property line to property line. But the way you've located it on the property, it works really well. I appreciate that the barn and the ADU are pulled down away from the street, and they're at a lower elevation, which helps tremendously. The guest house, I don't have a problem with it where it's located. It's going to be at the same grade as the house, which makes sense. The mound, I have a big problem with. And I understand the need for a mound. I don't understand the need for an eleven-foot mound. And when I saw that today, and I think you guys saw the same thing that we did. You know, it's interesting because you say it's at street level, but as it goes out from street level, it impacts the view farther out, right? So you've got to actually take it down some so that you still can shield the house. And I agree with the statement that was made that by having it there, it softens the house, and it doesn't look as large as it is. And I also get the need for privacy. You heard the last house that was in here to be approved, and the comment that I made is they were talking about olive trees in the front yard and blocking the view. We're not Orange County. We're not, you know, we're not going to allow something like that. So if we do approve a mound at a greatly reduced elevation, you've got to be careful what you plant there. And we're going to want to see some sort of a landscaping plan so we know what it is. One of the things that we mandate on new developments is is that there's no planting of vegetation above the ridge line, right? And then, you know, we'd like to see it scattered as. She said, you know, it's not right, but we all think we have a little stake in this property because it's been where everybody goes and sits at sunset and has a cocktail and looks at the ocean. So we want to try to find that happy balance. And it's your property, and you have, you know, your property rights, and we can't tell you what to do. But we're going to try to guide you in a good direction. The basement, I'm comfortable with it being under the roof line, not necessarily under the structure per se. I cannot wrap my head around that portion that has to go out beyond the drip line. And again, we start making changes to the code, and then everybody just keeps pushing them and pushing them, and we just, we can't do it. So I'd want to see that taken back from the house. You know, and the tunnel coming out, I get the need for it, but I still would like to see some sort of a wall. And I mean, I know you're going to landscape and whatnot. But again, we've made, you know, fifty people before them on basements and everything else put that wall up while they're not making it being put in here. I mean, we've got to have consistency when we look at these things. So, you know, that's my input. So I guess the question is, is we can vote on this or we can try to move it forward. But I think, I don't know that we're in a place to do that. I hate to ask for it to be flagged again. But that mound is just so critical that I don't know how we approve it until we come to some understanding of what that mound would be. And I know time is money, and you guys want to get started, and I hate to push it for one more meeting. But I just, I think we need a few more tweaks to it, and we need to understand that mound. I want to give you the mound. I just, we've got to find that happy balance, right? And if that mound's too high, I walk on Crest Road, I'm going to get shot when I'm up there. So I'm trying to protect myself. So I'm just one person on that.
Why don't we decide on what the guidance is? So if there's clarity on that, that they can come back with for the next meeting and something that we would feel comfortable with the necessary changes.
We can do that. On the mound, though, I don't want to say six feet and...
Yeah, not exactly. I'm not talking about, well, on the basement extending beyond the roof line, I think that's clear and something I would support in terms of that guidance of reducing that.
I think he says eighteen inches or two feet. So it's not, it shouldn't be a big deal.
And with the mound, I think the guidance would be shield the house. Be clear, you know, I think we should look at it being staked, but be clear on what landscaping, if any, other than natural grasses, would be on top of it. So is there any extension beyond the mound? But I think we all agree that shielding the house is fine, but considering the roof line is thirty-one feet below crest, having a mound up here, shielding the house isn't necessary. And I get, we talked about it earlier today. The further the mound goes south on the property, the steeper the slope will be coming up from the driveway and that retaining wall there. So it just has to be, yeah, some balance of...
And how wide, how wide it is relative to parallel to crest. So if that can be a little bit squeezed down. Because your earlier comments, real quick, and I failed to kind of comment on the mound, and I definitely had an opinion on that. But as most of us think, we look at our view like this. We don't. We look at our view like this because we're up high, and I have a similar view. So I'm looking down in the canyon and down at the whitewater view, which we can't see from crest. But you can see a little bit of Tarrane and everything over on the right-hand side. And you have the canyon on the left. But the, and the house comes down Southfield X Route to Pac-Saddle down there, so it kind of obstructs. But all of that area, it's not just Catalina. It's everything between Catalina and the coastline that we're trying to maximize. So you're kind of looking a little bit this way. So to everybody's point, the minute that mound's up, it's, you're just, so I'm trying to reduce it not just height-wise, but also on the sides. So that there's a little combination. And then therefore, in the center for the house, the main structure there, it is covered. So maybe that's the happy medium, as Brad said. I think that's a good way to say it, is just come up with something. But I agree. I think everybody's a little confused on that. So it's worth taking one more shot, to be honest, and trying to just look at that area.
Can I ask something?
Let me open it back up so you can come on up. So do me a favor, just come up and state your name for the record, just so I can get it.
I actually, I just wanted to ask if it would be helpful if I showed that film again. And if we just kind of very slowly, and we can stop at every point, because it does, I think it helps to...
Would you put six feet in the film?
It will take some time, and actually...
I'm happy to look at the film. I don't feel like what I saw in the film...
Getting at is on the film, you could see you had views on the, when the mound went down, right? So I don't know that we need to see it again.
So this is where the mound starts. So right at this point. And so this is how it continues. And more or less at this point, this is the high point. And this is an accurate representation of where this is relative to the horizon and to the islands. And so here, you know, this is where it tapers down again. And again, so this is where the house starts to appear. And what we really want to make sure is that we don't expose the house. So we, this is the, you know, biggest concern of ours. And that's not just privacy. That's also, we just think it's nicer to kind of look at the landscape feature and nature rather than the roof of a house.
You've just got to find that happy balance.
All right.
I know we can get there.
I think when they flagged it, by the way, it seemed like it was a circular mound this way rather than sloping to the sides. And so I would suggest you kind of...
I agree.
It's six feet at the top, but you're hoping it's tapering down, right?
I agree. And because it's not sort of flagged all the way to the end. So it sort of ends kind of abruptly, and it's this cake. So I completely understand that concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public portion again. Sean, I think you were about done. No, you were making some...
I mean, we could move forward. I can make a motion to extend this to the next meeting, or...
Are you guys okay with taking one more whack at this? Okay. Yes, so let's do that.
I make a proposal that we continue zoning case number 23070 until field trips.
Roll call, John.
Commissioner Cardenas?
Approved.
Commissioner Cooley?
Approved.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Sheriff Shell?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you guys for all the effort. Much appreciated. Here for all of them? Wow, what's going on, jeez? All right. Now we're moving on to new public hearings. This is zoning case number 23-056. This is for 22 Middle Ridge Lane South. John, you want to give us an overview?
Sure. This is a new item for the planning commission. Twenty-nine Middle Ridge Lane South. Site plan review and a variance. The property is located on the northwest side of the city of Rolling Hills. It's right in there. It's zone RES2. Just another map of the same. This is the visiting map showing the proposed project there in yellow. The thousand-foot radius shows the notices that were mailed out to the owners. A part of that actually goes outside the city into LA County Incorporated. And this project, to give you some background on this, 1996, the applicant submitted an application for an addition and a stable to partially encroach into the front yard setback. And that was approved by the planning commission in 1996. In 2000, the commission granted the exception to that approval to 2002. In September 2022, the city received a complaint from a resident that dump trucks had been delivering dirt on Middle Ridge Lane South. We eventually found out that that property was at 29 Middle Ridge Lane South. We issued a notice of violation that the import and storage of dirt was a violation of the Rolling Hills Mistable Code. And on April 24th, of 2023, the applicant submitted an application for zoning case number 23-056. And again, that's for variance for import of dirt and also site plan review for the grading. So the summaries of the approval needed. Again, the site plan review allows the grading. There are 638 cubic yards to fill. Surface area is 5,848 square feet, according to the engineer. And the depth of the dirt is three feet. That variance is to allow the import of dirt because our code does not allow any import or export of dirt unless it's exempted dirt, which is excavation for a basement or swimming pool. There are three pads on the site. The main pad, pad one, is for the single-family residences. There's no change to that. Pad two is for the barn, which has no change. The commission is looking at the third pad, which is the pad down below. It's 5,848 square feet, which is the limit of grading only. And there's no development proposed for that pad. The lot coverage on the property is 11.5%, which is under the maximum permitted, the 35%. The total site disturbed, it's currently existing at 34.4% disturbed. And there is a little bit of, I guess, additional disturbance on there, 5,848 square feet. It's about 5.4%. Bring the total to close to the maximum 40% permitted. It's about 39.8%. In terms of the grading, again, there are 638 cubic yards total. This shows the subject property on Middle Ridge Lane South. And so the roadway is right through here. The entrance, this is the main residence. This is the barn. And the grading is done in this location here, which is pad number three. The outside line there shows the property lines. There's a trail that's managed by RSCA, which is down below over here. And there's also a... And there's also a canyon on the other side over here with a stream that in this location. So this is a close-up of that very corner. And this area right here shows the area that's disturbed, where the dirt was put in. And that area there generally shows the outline of the, uh, surface area where the grading was, uh, the dirt was moved, moved to. These are just some of the photos that were taken. Again, this is, this started off as a code enforcement case, so our staff was alerted by it from, uh, a resident. Um, and so these are just trucks shown on Middle Ridge Lane going up and down, um, dropping off the dirt. This is a photo taken across from the canyon, showing the, the mounds of dirt being delivered by the dump truck. And this is in September twenty-two, after the work had been, uh, the dirt had been moved. Um, the dirt had been leveled to, or flattened, um, but it wasn't compacted, so it was really soft when we were, we visited the site. Again, this is another, uh, photo of the dump truck on Middle Ridge Lane South across the canyon. When you look at the piles of dirt, I count about ten of them in that location, and each dump truck holds about ten cubic yards of dirt. So you can imagine that, uh, with ten piles there, it's about a hundred cubic yards of dirt. Um, and they're looking to bring six hundred cubic yards there, so multiply that by about six, and that's how much dirt was moved onto the property. These are just some areas of the site. The one on the left shows the site in twenty-twenty-three. Um, this is after some rains, so there, there was some, uh, the rain sort of caused some erosion on there, which kind of led down to the trail. This is a trail from R H C A, and some of the dirt was able to get down to that trail. R H C A was concerned, and they were, they had to go in there and clear the dirt. Um, we also contacted Fish and Wildlife because of the canyon down below here, and they came out, they determined that it wasn't, um, impacted, and so no further action was done on their part. But you can see how it looked back in twenty-nineteen, before any of the dirt had been moved. The one concern, and these property lines aren't exactly accurate, but you can kind of see that maybe some, it looks like some of the dirt may have washed off onto the neighboring property, um, as well as down to, into the, into that, uh, the trail. Another angle, the left being twenty-twenty-three and the right being twenty-nineteen. And as you can see on the right, um, that says before that the dirt had been moved on to the property. And then in twenty-twenty-three, you can see the dirt moved on the property with some, uh, signs of erosion after the rains leading onto the trail. So we did, um, publish this in the Daily Breeze. It was noticed in there, uh, also notices were sent out to residents within a thousand feet of the property. The issues of concern include the grading calculations. We wonder if there, um, more grading is needed on this site, and we were working with the applicant to be able to have the engineer provide a complete project of this out there. Um, but being a code enforcement case, that's why it kind of took, um, this long. So, you know, in order to receive the as-built grading, um, you know, we, we found it to be difficult in there. So, uh, again, what we're, um, what they are proposing, um, they were sort of stopped in the middle of the work being done. And so we, that's when we issued a notice of, uh, violation. Um, that's why some of the dirt had eroded away is because it wasn't compacted properly, it wasn't properly engineered. And so now the applicant is here before you, he's asking for approval to be able to leave the dirt onto the property and finish up the work. Again, we did reach out to other departments, including Department of Fish and Wildlife, also, um, Building and Safety, the grading plan checker was able to go out there and visit the site as well. And, uh, there is need to recompact the site because of the, you know, the, the dirt washing away when it rains. In terms of environmental review, we found that it's categorically exempt, class four, minor alterations to the land. And our recommendation is the planning commission to open the public hearing, invite public to comment, provide direction to staff and the applicant. And in case the planning commission does wish to approve the project, we have included a resolution for your consideration. That concludes my presentation.
Thanks, John. Any questions?
Uh, yeah, just within the resolution here, um, it covers all the necessary steps for the soils engineering stuff that we talked about this morning, recompaction of the grading, all of that.
Yeah, it does require a grading permit, because any work more than fifty cubic yards requires a grading permit. It goes to, um, the grading plan checker. They would review it. We did have the grading plan checker go out there, and he submitted a preliminary review, an assessment of the, of the condition out there. And on page one-forty-six and one-forty-seven of the staff report, that's the email from Anthony Wong over in L.A. County in terms of what's needed in order to, um, obtain that grading permit.
Okay. So if the resolution is approved, in order to obtain the grading permit, all of these steps would have to be followed?
Yeah. I mean, some of those, you know, resident control plan, um, you know, they would have to, he'd have to go before L.A. County, Building and Safety. Um, and their plan checker will review the material, and if everything meets the requirements, a grading permit can be issued.
Now, even though nothing is going to be developed, nothing's going to be built on that. I mean, if they were to go and build on it at a later date, they'd have to go through all this. But because it's just an open field, they still have to go through all of this? I mean, the, the, we, when we come across these types of cases, cases, the choice is to have them pull it out or to kind of fix what's there, right? And we've always come to the conclusion, as, as much as we don't like it, is that it does more damage to pull it out, right? It's, it's there. The genie's out of the bottle. But the question is, what, within reason, what needs to be done to an open field to make it, um...
Stable.
Stable, th- th- you know, w- w- without, you know, breaking the bank on, on, on this. I mean, is there a happy medium that can be resolved that, you know? Again, if, if the site ever got developed with a barn or, or whatever, I mean, they've got to do geological reports and everything else. They would have to probably come in and recompact the whole thing and redo it. I mean, quite frankly, where their, uh, numbers are and whatnot, I don't think that they could build anything, and they've already got a house and a barn, I don't know what else they'd build. But I'm just struggling with going through all of these hoops for just an open field, right? So I'm just trying to wrap my head around what we're asking them to do or what needs to be done to stabilize it.
Well, I guess you're not the body that has to review the, the grading plan, you know, do the, do the plan check for it. Your, uh, the planning commission's responsibility is to review the import of dirt on there, um, which is required on the variance. So if you approve the variance to, for them to keep the dirt on the property, then it could go to Building and Safety, they would check the, the plans, review the plans, the calculations, to make sure that it's been done correctly and that it drains properly, and they would be the ones issuing the grading permit.
And do they look at the site as though it's a developable site? I mean, did they make them take it to that level? Or what, what level do you have to take an open field to?
I think here it just says, so drains properly to...
Yeah, I guess that would be a question for the grading, grading engineer.
Well, it sits, it's right next to a very usable trail. I think my concern would be, how do you make it so it doesn't have the erosion impacting that trail?
That was, that was my only concern as well, because it, when it did rain, it looked like it was a bunch of sand that was dumped there. When it did rain, it just washed off.
Yeah.
And kind of blew out the trail. But, uh, again, I, I, when I think of as-built, I think of it's there, we're going to prove it, nothing else happens, right? Like you're implying with a, with a field. That's what I was asking about, you know, if we prove it, the, the grading as-built, you know, what, what has to happen after that?
That's kind of what I'm...
Yeah.
Trying to, trying to figure out. And I mean, I'm not trying to change the process or...
I just, I don't want to be responsible if we, if we say, yes, we're going to prove the grading as-built, and then the rains come and it washes, you know?
But I don't think that's our purview.
Our purview is... That's what I heard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our purview is just say yes or no on the dirt, and then, I hate to say it, but the city's got to take it the next step on what needs to be done to stabilize the site.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Uh, John, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, I'm going to open it up to the public now. If you'd like to speak, please come up, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Ken Johnson, and I'm the property owner, uh, and the guilty party. Let me, um, let me give you a little bit of background, and I'm here to answer any questions you want. Uh, first and foremost, I wasn't trying to be sneaky about the dirt. Uh, that pad, the, the bulk of that pad was built twenty-eight years ago when we, uh, binged the entire property for an ancient landslide. So the bulk of it is quote-unquote certified, uh, engineered fill. Um, what I was attempting to do is I went to, I believe it was the names, I don't remember, um, to the associations that I need some dirt, because what I wanted to do is re-butress the edge of my, the, of that lower pad, uh, which is a pasture, uh, and raise the, um, the edge. Because historically, what I have done is, when the edge is raised, when the rains come, the water comes back onto the pad and soaks in and rehydrates, uh, the soil there for my, um, orchard. And so they gave you the name of a, a, a dirt contractor who was doing a basement someplace behind the gates, and he started bringing dirt, and quite frankly, it got out of hand. Uh, I should have, I should have stopped him, but I didn't. Um, and so that's, that's how that dirt got there. And in no terms was I trying to be sneaky about it. Uh, but yes, I brought in dirt, and, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, take responsibility for that. Uh, but let me make a couple of corrections. The reason I did get stopped, and I stopped, uh, I got stopped just before I was able to re-establish the berm, and then the rains came. When the rains came and the berm wasn't there, the water came on the pad and washed, uh, washed the spider out, so to speak. Uh, with a berm there, and it's been there for twenty-eight years, the water does not go to the trail. It stays on the property and re-hydrates. And that was the, my initial, uh, foray in this was to re-establish that. So, um, with a proper berm there, no water exits the trail. I don't want the water exit trail, I want to rehydrate the, the property. The top of the property, the rest of the property, uh, when we graded it, and we did eighty thousand yards, sixty thousand yards of grading, uh, on that property, it's all, uh, built into a drainage system. It starts at the top, goes all the way down, and exits in a twelve-foot, I mean, twelve-inch, uh, pipe into a diffuser. The only water on my property now that would access the trail right now would be the water that gets on that pad, which I'd like to retain and so forth. So that was my attempt at doing that, number one. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Have you reviewed what they've, what they've asked you to do? And do you have any issue with hiring whoever they've said you've got to hire and go through that process?
A couple of things, uh, you know, I... That's, uh, what I would like to do. I, it was not to go through an engineering fill and so forth, because it's a pasture. Uh, it's always been a pasture, always going to be a pasture. I don't want to, I would like to avoid going through the expense and the permits and so forth for engineered fill. What is there now, uh, that, what was added was track rolled in place. Um, that is certainly, in my opinion, uh, stable enough, uh, for, for a pasture. Uh, if I've got to go through all those other processes, then I've got no choice, uh, but to do that.
If it was done that way, why did it erode?
It eroded because the pasture is here, the dirt was tilted this way, the rain came and, and went down like that, and just like the Grand Canyon was built, it took out a substantial part of, as John said, of the dirt, and it all ended up on the trail, uh, which I fixed.
You didn't get to fix the bench?
I didn't get to fix the berm. Had, had I been able to fix the berm, none of that erosion would have happened. But, you know, it did. Yeah. But the, 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 the point of the story is, uh, the point of clarification is erosion will not occur if a proper berm is put in place. And it's been that way for twenty-eight years.
You have a good point. Maybe that just has to be proven that you do that berm, and then maybe it doesn't have to go through all this stuff.
The request, uh, before the committee is, uh, to let me retain the dirt that's there and repair the erosion that did happen and re, uh, uh, establish the berm. And we did civil engineering drawings, which are part of the, uh, the process, to raise that two feet so that the edge of, the edge of the, of the, of the pad, if you will, would be two feet higher. So when the water gets on this pad, it comes back, uh, you know, towards, actually towards the house and hydrates down through the, uh, through the, through the dirt. And I'd much rather prefer doing that than providing a, uh, a drainage system to drain that water down to the, to the, um, on the canyon. There's no reason to do that, to add more water down there when the water can well absorb and, and needs to be absorbed, you know, to rehydrate the, the soil. That's, that's my plan. But I'm, I'm here to do whatever I have to do.
No questions? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I will close the public portion, and let's have a discussion.
I don't, I don't think there's much to discuss. Um, you know, the, the dirt's there, it needs to be, um, let's say, finished and, and put into a, a more stable state. How it's finished and, and what that stable state looks like is, it sounds like going to be up to, uh, county. I mean, for me, it's pretty, pretty straightforward, simple.
Okay.
As in, just approve the import of dirt, which is what we've been charged to decide?
As opposed to kicking it back and sending bulldozers up there and dump trucks to roll it out?
Yeah.
Taking it out of the city.
Plus, I mean, the, I think the other plus to have it is, is it's, uh, good access for the fire department to get down there should there ever be a fire. So, I mean, I, I think it's a plus to have it. And you're going to do more damage by pulling it out, so.
Wouldn't be a great corral.
It's got a little road going down there now. Well, me?
Yeah.
I think I, I was just querying, our decision is we grant the import of the dirt, and then the next step is not something we can identify and, and require?
I agree, and just based on a couple of my questions, I mean...
It'll be a practical solution that gets worked out?
Yeah. Let the Johnsons go, uh, explore with, uh, the people who make the decision on the land of, and if he doesn't have to go through all of that stuff, great, good for him. But otherwise, I think, you know, I'm okay with the dirt, so, uh, that's what I've got.
You want to make a motion?
Sure. I, I, uh... Motion to approve.
Go five-six?
Uh, twenty-twenty-four oh seven.
I'll make the resolution.
Where is it?
Five-six, is that not right?
Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two-four dash zero-seven.
A second?
Great. Do you want to do roll call?
Sure. There, there is one thing, though, I want, I'd like to mention before that, is that, um, I mean, we didn't quite get accurate, uh, plans to begin with. So the six-thirty-eight is, there's a question as, as to whether more dirt needs to be moved back in in order to, you know, fill in the, the areas that, that had eroded away initially. So I think that's something that needs to be done, uh, at the next stage with, uh, building plan check to get an accurate count and find out how much more dirt is needed to be brought in onto the site to level out.
We want to make sure enough gets brought in that it stabilizes the site so that it doesn't run down into the canyon like it did in the past. So do we leave that to your discretion as to...
Well, we, we usually do have a condition... Well, we, we usually do have a condition in here that minor modifications can be approved at the staff level. So as long as the commission's clear, maybe we can just say that, you know, no more than twenty percent of whatever they asked for, or whatever number that might be, that we could do at staff level if more dirt's needed.
Perfect. All right, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number two zero two four dash oh, seven with the inclusion that minor adjustments can be approved by staff to the quantity of dirt required to remediate.
I'll second again.
Do you want anyone to do roll call?
Commissioner Cardenas? Commissioner Cooley? Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Sheriff Shell?
All right, I don't see any old business. Is there any new business?
None.
Schedule the field trips?
For right now, I don't think we have any.
Okay.
Us, well, two possum, yeah, two possum ridge end, I'm sorry, two possum ridge end, yeah, the continued items. So if we can get the plans back from two possum ridge for the barn and tennis court swap, we can bring that back.
And I've got to think that, that twenty-three Crest Road East is going to come back to us next time as well. But if we don't have anything tentative, let, let's just move on. Let us know and we'll, we'll get it scheduled. Items from staff?
None.
Love it. Items from planning commission? We are adjourned, the next meeting is Tuesday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four at six thirty in the city count, uh, city hall. We can leave this stuff for you guys. About getting it down here.